Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the February edition of the Lewisville Town Council. It's great to have all of you all with us tonight in our audience. I want to welcome those watching us home on our streaming Facebook page, on our streaming on LewisvilleNC.net, and on Channel 6. Wherever you are, we're glad you're with us tonight and watch your town government in action. We'll begin our meeting this evening with an invocation by our pastor and residents, Tom Albert, and that will be followed by a pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Marcy Goleman. If you'll stand if you're able, please.
I have been fortunate to be doing this for quite a few years. All the different faces back there. My confidence is my best. I, like a lot of other ministers, have stood up here and at the up place and prayed for these folks and for God's guidance for them, God's guidance for our community. And I truly believe in the power of prayer and always have. And when you look at our community and the job that these folks have done, continue to do for our community, it is truly evidence of the power of prayer working through them and all of us that found prayer. For God will give you thanks. He gives you thanks for the community that we live in. He gives you thanks for our neighbors. He gives you thanks for all of the leaders of our community who give up of their time and of their talents to help us to be the very best community that we can be. So tonight, we continue to pray for them. And if your blessings on them, on the wisdom of their choices, on all the decisions that they have to make for us, but Lord, may I ask a blessing on each and every one of us? For we are also part of this community. And help us to realize with your power the difference that each and every one of us can make as an individual to make this such a wonderful place to live. The prayer is in God's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll take our roll call this evening in its customary manner with an introduction by our council members. Danger.
Hello, I'm Ed Smith. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Sandra Mock.
I'm Mike Horn.
Robert Gray.
Marcy Goleman.
And I'm Fred Franklin. A pleasure to serve as one of your council members.
Council members, we have one addition to our agenda under seven, an addition of seven B, which is a follow-up to our annexation request for Twin Oaks Lake Drive. Is that correct, Ms. Walker?
Correct.
Very good. Are there any other changes, any other additions? No? Council members, if it meets with your approval, we'll accept the motion.
Take a motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Mock makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Hank, if you'll please lead us through our consent agenda. Let me do this first because Mrs. Mock will remind me that I haven't introduced our town staff since we all dressed up because we were going to be on television tonight. I think it's probably a good idea to do that. Sitting over here is Hank Perkins, who is our town manager. Bo Hauf is our town attorney. Looking back over the multitudes back there, Tracy Krill is our communications specialist. George Hauser is our public works director. Josh Harold, sitting up here in the front row, is our public, is our planning director. Joyce Walker is our town clerk, and Pam Orell is our town finance director. Welcome, folks. Get to know these folks. They're the ones that really deserve the credit for making a town run like it does. With that, Mr. Manager?
Our consent agenda consists of four items. The first is Resolution 2018007 for the acceptance and approval of the monthly financials for December 2017. Next is the approval of council briefing and action minutes from January 4th, 2018. The approval of council meeting minutes from January 11th, 2018. And finally, the approval of council planning meeting minutes from January 20th, 2018.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that routinely come before the council. We generally take them as a group to dispose of them. However, any council member can request any individual item be pulled off the consent agenda and considered by itself. Council, what's your pleasure?
Take a motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Mock makes the motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Well, if you notice why we have almost an overflow crowd tonight, we have a full contingent from the school system in Lewisville Elementary School. Let me just do some brief introductions before we do a presentation I know that I've been looking forward to. We have our school superintendent, Bev Amory. Bev, thanks so much for all you do for our kids. I know it is a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week job for you, and the transformation that our system is undergoing under your leadership and the progress that we've made as representative of what we've done here in Lewisville is very much appreciated. We have our resident school board member, Lori Clark. Thanks Lori for being here. It's always good to see you. We have our assistant superintendent, Donna Cannon. Donna, thank you for being here. It's great that you're here. We have Katie Carroll, who is with the Lewisville Elementary PTA. Thank you guys for all being here. And I think we have some of your cheering section over here on this side as well. With that, I'm going to ask, Angie, if you'll come up, please, and we'll do a brief presentation. You want to drag some folks up here with you? Come on out here. Get out where they can shoot at us. And when I say shoot, our photographer. I was not going that other direction. Would you like to introduce your teachers?
This is Sandy Wallach. She's a third grade teacher. This is Karen Yap. She is our financial secretary, so she keeps us in line. All we've had students say, Ms. Toplin runs the students, Ms. Yap runs the school. Tanya Bayer is a kindergarten teacher.
Great, very good. Glad you all are here. You know, part of my joy in being mayor is I get the opportunity on occasion to represent the town council in making and recognizing great things that are going on in Lewisville. Tonight is really one of those great events. Lewisville Elementary School for, since Mr. Franklin, you're the historian here, Ms. Mock, since 1945?
I'm sorry?
1945, Lewisville Elementary School?
Probably. My mother went to high school there.
Okay.
Before it burned down.
So we're close in that neighborhood. And since 1945, Lewisville Elementary School has been an absolutely vital and integral part of our community. You know, people talk about what makes communities. Well, certainly people do, but it's your schools, it's your parks, it's the places where people come together, they share experiences, they learn, they get to know each other. And for, since 1945, Lewisville Elementary School has been absolutely one of the pivotal parts, pivotal organizations in helping shape our community and make Lewisville what it is today. I am really proud to recognize Lewisville Elementary School for their outstanding academic achievement for the school year 2016-17. And Angie, let me just take a moment and read this. Whereas it is well-established that a student's academic achievement, particularly in elementary school, is directly related to their professional and personal success in life. And whereas it is the mission of our public school system to provide the highest level of educational instruction and opportunities to all of our children. And whereas every day, the highly committed, talented, and caring teachers and staff at Lewisville Elementary School strive to provide an outstanding learning experience environment for our children. And whereas in the 2016-17 school year end-of-grade achievement test, our own Lewisville Elementary School was rated among the top 4% in the state. It's actually among the top 3.7765842. We'll round up to four. For proficiency and student academic growth in North Carolina's standard course of study in English Language Arts, reading, mathematics, and the essential standards in science. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lewisville Town Council recognizes the teachers, staff, students, and parents of Lewisville Elementary School for this outstanding achievement and extends our community's sincerest appreciation for a job well-done in preparing our children for the future. Presented on this day by the Lewisville Town Council, the eighth day of February 2018. So we need to all gather in here for a quick picture. Come on in here, everybody. Wait, let me take my glasses off. The vanity hit me.
All right. One, two, three. Hold it right there. One more. One, two, three. The family. Come on up.
So let's get the whole crowd. I think it's a great idea. I'll stand back here behind you while you all come up. Folks, how about coming over here? We'll fill out the, we'll fill out the whole group. Come on in. Come on in here tight. We keep moving backwards. Have you noticed we're moving back and back and back?
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Excellent. Angie, would you like to say anything? I'd ask your superintendent, but I know she would take advantage of that.
I would just, I'll say first, thank you guys. Thank all of you for recognizing us tonight, but I'm just very proud of, I'm proud of our teachers and our staff and our PTA for all they do for us because it is a, it's a team effort, but most of all, our children. That's why we're there every day. We have the best kids in the world, and we live in the best town. And so when we keep working hard, it's going to be a perfect year. That's our goal. Thank you.
Thanks, Angie. Thanks for all you did. Very good. That was exciting for me. Exciting for all of us, actually, because it's a wonderful way to start off our meetings. We have three opportunities for those of you in the audience who wish to address the council tonight. This first one is a public forum, and if you have anything on your mind that you'd like to share with the council, your thoughts, this is the first of two opportunities for you to share those thoughts. We have a public forum at the beginning, at the end of our meeting. We also have a continuation of a public hearing from last month. So if you are here to speak during the public hearing on changes to, or a ordinance in addition to our UDO, please hold your comments to that particular part of the meeting. Is there anybody here who wishes to address the council? Anybody else wish to address the council? For those of you at home, we're chuckling because everybody ducked under the camera as they left, so we now have been diminished to a small degree. Nobody else. With that, we'll close the public forum. There you go. There's also forms in the back of the room for those folks who wish to leave written comments as part of the record. Council, we will have a continuation of our public hearing that we had in February on UDO L-153 text amendments. As you recall, we began the public hearing and we had some discussion, and Mr. Moore from the school system requested that he hadn't had enough time with his staff to review some of the text changes and ask if we would continue the public hearing until tonight. So we are actually in the public hearing, but we'll continue that discussion now. Anybody wish to speak during the continuation of a public hearing? Anybody wish to speak? Come on up, please. Say your name and your address.
My name is Colvin Moore. I'm the Director of Construction and Facility Planning and Construction for Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. My address is 475 Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Mr. Mayor and Town Council, I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to speak, and I do appreciate the opportunity to, or your consideration at the January meeting to continue this and did allow our staff 30 more days to review it. It took them 28 to do it, so we, I apologize for the late information that I provided and try to give you some feedback on what our concerns were. So if you'd allow me to kind of go through, is it okay to just go through the document?
Certainly, we'll have copies and we'll make notes as you speak.
All right. On page two of seven, I'm going to start out with a big one, and Mr. Mayor and I had some conversation about this, and I can kind of understand some resistance to this, but item two on page two regarding the buffering, we would ask to eliminate this section entirely. We've had this concern in a number of municipalities in Winston-Salem, Kernsville, Clemmons, and while we do understand the desire to buffer, to not be able to, you know, to give you some, what are the words, to give you some buffer from public view, our goal is to make these buildings visible. Not because we're so proud of how pretty they are, but we are, but because we need it for security. You know, we want the people to see what's going on in a school. If somebody's vandalizing a school at night, if somebody's parked in the parking lot that doesn't need to be there, if there are things going on on the campus that someone needs to see, you know, if you've got cars going by and you don't have as dense as a buffer areas, then it allows that exposure. So it's more of a security thing for us more than it is a cost. You know, we're not trying to, we're not going to save a whole lot of money by eliminating landscaping, but it's a security issue for us. So I would respectfully ask to consider eliminating that. On page three of seven, item 13, and we had a lot of discussion with the planning board about this item, and in all fairness, the planning board and Mr. Harold, we went back and forth numerous times on how that should go. And what they eventually established or eventually landed on was using the 25% of the student population number. We would like to again ask that this section be stricken. It's still kind of vague in how that number's calculated, how you specifically count what the school can accommodate, or definition of the word accommodate. So we feel like it's still vague enough that it probably would not benefit either the school or the town. And actually, the, or the ability to put a mobile unit on the school property is really governed by the school's ability to serve the kids. You can't, if you put two big modular units that are going to add 250 kids to the campus, you're adding 500 kids to a school that was designed for 800 or 900, you're eating lunch at 9:30. And we can't, you know, we can't take the feedback from the parents for us because we don't have a cafeteria big enough, we don't have a gym big enough, we can't offer the services that we need to provide by adding a lot of. So that number, the number of mobile units or modular units kind of takes care of itself. We don't really have that kind of a restriction because we can't, with a building that size, if we add square footage to the building, we add bricks and mortar, we run out of room to put modular, so it kind of governs itself. So we're asking that that be, that that be stricken in its entirety. Page four of seven, item three, it's regarding the off-street loading. There was a reduction from 50, I'm sorry, from one unloading space per 50 parking spaces, excuse me, to one per 100. Did a little research on the MSTA, and they actually recommend you don't have over five to seven, depending on the size of the school. This is a small to middle-sized school, so we're asking that that number be capped at five. If we can cap that number at five, and the reason that is, if we get too many spaces, so bless you, if you get too many of those unloading spaces, if you get a 1,500 capacity school that may be built here, if it was a high school built here 10 or 15 years from now, and you've got 15 unloading spaces, it basically becomes a pit road scenario. You've got so many cars stacked right there trying to unload that you can't manage them because this car gets done and nobody wants to wait, so you're kind of weaving in and out. So that's why the MSTA, which is kind of the regulation, regulating authority for queuing and on-campus traffic, MSTA recommends that number be between five and seven, and we're asking that that, that item number three be modified and just say, or a maximum of Page five of seven, old item G, new item F. We would like to change the wording that is highlighted in yellow, the new wording, and change the connectivity to parking lots from streets or roads is encouraged. I understand, and we definitely want to be a pedestrian-friendly school, pedestrian-friendly campus. Had this conversation regarding Meadowark and the campus and the situation at Meadowark, that we're trying to encourage pedestrian activity. The only thing is, we want to have a little bit of flexibility in doing that. You know, it's not an issue maybe if the school is sitting right on a road. And I'm trying not to be stereotypical of a new middle school at Robin Hood Road. I'm thinking not only two years down the road, but 15, 20 years down, but Robin Hood is an example for this one. If we're moved toward the north end of the property, you know, we've got fairly good connectivity to Robin Hood Road with a sidewalk, whereas if we're on the south end of the property, we could be a quarter to half a mile from Robin Hood Road and needing to run sidewalks. So we would just like to have a little flexibility to that. It's like I had explained to Mayor Horn earlier, encouraged, you know, if I come up and say I can't put a sidewalk to the road because it's going to cost me $12,000 on a $25 million project, that's not, that's me not being, not having, not encouraging it. You know, that's a nominal minimal cost for a large-sized project. If we're talking $100,000, $200,000 with a sidewalk, it's a different story. So that's, that's why we're asking for a little, again, a little leeway with that. Item H on the same page, I'm sorry, old item H, new item G on the same page, just a minor change in the first sentence. Pedestrian sidewalks and/or greenway paths shall extend outward from the campus to existing or planned residential developments. We would like to change the word "to" to the word "toward." Again, using the Robin Hood scenario, depending on where you are on a 50-acre site, if there's a neighborhood that's planned on the southwest side, and the way we interpret it, it may be a misinterpretation, the way you're interpreting, if there's a planned neighborhood, we've got to take a sidewalk from our, from our parking lot to that neighborhood. And if we've misinterpreted that, then welcome an explanation, but we would just like to say, we'd like to kind of have sidewalks going toward that area. If we don't develop the whole area, then we stop the sidewalks where our development stops. But the next item, new item H, there's a reference to a context map, and I think the planning board's intention with that is if somebody, if there was a, if there was a minor change made, there would be to be some kind of a context map to identify what the change was. We're asking that we just, that that just, to be an amendment to that section that says a site plan, which is what we'll typically do. We'll contract with a design service to do architectural plans and site plans, civil drawings, and all of those. We're just asking that a site plan be considered a context plan instead of us having to engage the services of somebody else to do a, to do a context plan. Also, same page under stadium parking, we would like to request that go from one space for every three to one space for every four. That's more in line with some other stadiums that we are currently involved with. There's a private group that's working to have a stadium installed at RJ Reynolds, and the requirement on that stadium in downtown Winston essentially is one space, one space per four seats in the stadium. Page six of seven, and I promise I'm getting closer, is item L, is the parking, there's some description in the parking talking about minimizing the view of the parking for adjacent users and public travel ways. Our parking serves, really serves two purposes. We want people to know how to get into the school, and if there's some concern with how you get into a school and how you access it, you do that a lot with parking. You can kind of tell when you pull into a campus where the traffic flows are, where the main office is, based on kind of how the parking's laid out. So we use that parking for that. But in a bigger realm, we do, there's a lot of pick-up and drop-off. And pick-up and drop-off typically happens at the front of the building, at the building that's, at the point that's closest to the road. And that pick-up and drop-off, from our discussions on queuing and the MSTA, a pick-up and drop-off takes a lot of road, takes a lot of asphalt to do that, and we use that parking lot during those two peak times to do that. So if we're, if we're having to drop, if we're dropping parent, dropping kids off at the front of the building and there's no parking lot because it's hidden around the back of the building, then we're going to have to add more asphalt. We've got to add more paving to create those pick-up and drop-off lanes. So that kind of restricts us with that development. And Mr. Mayor and council members, that's all I have. entertain any questions you may have.
It seems we have maybe two groups of comments that Mr. Moore has made. One has to do with limits on parking or mobile units that are more quantitative, number-oriented. And the other, or other concerns that he's expressed are a little more philosophical in how we approach connectivity and buffering and those types of things. The question, I guess I ask of council members, are there some of these that, are there some of these that we feel comfortable disposing of here this evening? Or are we comfortable disposing of all of them here this evening? Or do we need to ask the planning board to take another look at this and work with our planner, Josh, and the school system to maybe think through a little bit some of the more philosophical issues, particularly the safety in regards to buffering and the rear parking as, in the context that Mr. Moore presented it? So I'll kind of open that up for your all's thought.
I'm fine with doing away with the buffering. He does make a good point there as far as safety for the kids, invisibility, so.
That's page two.
Page two.
Number two.
Yes.
Josh, let me ask you this. I mean, recognizing that this is an ordinance, and at some future date when they bring forward a site plan, there is a potential that they could ask for variances from this. So that, this is not the final determination necessarily that there's other opportunities to ask for variances for whatever ends up in this ordinance?
They would have to be able to prove that they have a physical hardship to whatever that requirement might be.
Okay.
Well, and there's a specific, the law does not allow variances from site plan requirements.
Okay. But elements on the site plan?
Whether, whether you could not require something in a site plan is different, but if it's, if it makes it to the site plan, then they wouldn't be able to get a variance from site plan condition.
It would have to occur before the presentation of the site plan?
So this, this.
Before or during, yes.
This is going to be IP zoning? Is that right? I mean, would that be, make sense that this would be, or are we doing a campus district? Or are we?
Stay RS9.
Yeah, schools are allowed in the RS9 district. But if I'm thinking back to a similar kind of circumstance, although it had to do with fences, and if you'll recall, it was uses that are allowed within the IP zoning under the fence.
That's what I was thinking is, is when you guys were talking about it, you know, the problem is, for some of this, I like his explanations on everything, but for some of this, it's ordinance, so it's broad sweeping, and we, you know, that's why I was looking for the IP, because I was like, well, if we made this just for institutional public zoning, then that would, you know, we could do what we wanted, and it wouldn't affect everything else or allow a precedent maybe here.
I'd like to ask Josh, to what extent did the planning board's consideration of crafting this have to do with the extensive public input from the area when they came to these meetings?
I think there was, there was a lot of input to these meetings. We've met with the school system. I mean, you guys were involved quite a bit, probably three months' worth of meetings to go through this ordinance, so at least six meetings we had on this ordinance. So there was quite a bit of input. I will say that, you know, even if you're talking about the buffering, there are going to be other sections in the UDO currently that are going to talk about buffering as well, that are currently going to be enforced on this, on the site plan. With landscaping plans, if you look through the landscaping ordinance, there's specific language that talks about schools buffering. So what we've done with this is we've added language in this section to kind of enforce that. But there are other sections that talk about buffering, helping schools, Robin School.
Was buffering specifically brought up in those meetings from residents coming?
I can't recall if it was a specific or not. I know there's been lots of buffering talks with our Northeast Area Plan.
Right.
And included some of this, some of this conversation.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Councilman Zinger, I had received individual comments from people that attended the meetings that they were entrusted in buffering.
That they want, they want the buffering.
They were, yes.
And maybe I need a little help in clarifying the definition of buffering from, seems to me, when we talk about buffering on various properties, we're talking about the perimeter property lines from adjoining properties versus shrubbery or whatever that may be planted up close to a building, which I could see a difference in security issues if they were within 50 foot of a building, such as a school, versus the school being cited where it currently is projected to be and buffering right along the road edge at Robin Hood Road. I think, I think to Forsyth Country Day School, if you will, you ride down Shallowford Road, it's just the way it happened to turn out, but you've got, you can't hardly see the school down off the hill if you look that way as you're riding by. And to me, that's buffering. Now, down around the buildings, you don't have plants right up where people can hide and do bad things, so to speak. So I'm not sure if, what we've got in our ordinance here, what it's referring to, is it the perimeter line where you've got a berm built up and some trees planted on top of the berm? Or are we talking about closer in, within 100 foot of the actual building itself and so forth? So, you know, to me, I can understand the residents' concerns in the area of not wanting to see the great big school from a distance, if you will, as they're riding down the road, versus the security concerns of some perpetrator getting on-site and trying to hide as they work their way toward a building or, you know, try to do something along those lines. And so I need a fuller understanding before I can say thumbs up or thumbs down on this particular provision, I guess is what I'm trying to say, because I don't understand it and the intent behind it.
I know, I know with the site plans that I've dealt with in the past is that you have landscaping required, but then you have, when it says buffer zones, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, just specifically, for instance, when you have a commercial piece of property against a residential piece of property, there's a certain tight buffer yard that's required there so that, so that there is a barrier. And so I think, in my understanding of what we're looking at here is that's what we'd be talking about. And what their point is, the school system is saying is, is listen, we really want people to be able to see everything. And so that's where the rub is. And I understand completely.
Yeah, I can see both sides of it, you know, but I'm thinking, large site, school in the middle, there's a fine line in there somewhere. I'm not so sure we're going to achieve that tonight, but at the same time, you spoke earlier about cars parked on campus at times they shouldn't be, or vandalizing, vandalism, excuse me, occurring in after-hours and all. But if your school is set back so far anyhow, people are not going to be looking at that as they ride down the road, you know. But yet, you can provide the neighborhood just across the road with a buffer yard to, so it doesn't stand out like the proverbial sore thumb. So I'm up and down on this particular one.
Yeah. And I, and I respect that, and I want to clarify, what I was asking for was the buffering around the perimeter. While I do agree there's places they could hide on that shrub, we're okay with on-site buffering. And it's, it's really kind of hard to understand, but a lot, some of our best security people are the neighbors. Once we move, build a, build a, a school on a property, those are some of our best security hours. They take pride. It's really, I mean, it's their school. They paid for the school. And there, we've got some, some instances where the neighbors are, are in touch with our principals and our security director and the SROs, because if there's something going on, they're going, they're going to call them. If there's something that they see going on on that campus that shouldn't be, then they make those phone calls. I can sit here and tell you too, off the top of my head, without even going deep into it, that we have those relationships with, with neighbors.
Well, here's an easy one, I think. So I'll just, the, the whole idea of the context map or it's the site plan, I don't, I personally don't have any trouble with just making the site plan reflect whatever we need it to, to accommodate that. I don't-
So that's on page five.
That's H.
Number H.
So I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but that doesn't seem very, like a big deal.
Josh, should we just replace the word context with site plan map? Does that meet the, meet the concerns of the planning board?
I think it will. As long as everything is addressed under the context map, language is addressed on the site plan, it should be okay.
Yeah.
Mayor, while we're on page five, can we go ahead and take a look at the other two?
Sure.
Or three, excuse me.
Sure, absolutely. You want to do H, I, you want to do I, which falls-
Let's just take I while we're here.
Okay.
I really don't have a problem with moving it from three seats to four seats. I mean-
Yeah, I don't either.
All right. I think it's fine.
I think since there's already stadiums being built or refitted that, that are fitting with that requirement, that's fine.
I'd say with the pedestrian connectivity, the one issue that I would have there is, you know, at what point does this end? I mean, it says to, to make a walk towards the school system, so, you know, you break ground, it's going to take you a year to build this thing, right? So halfway through the year, someone comes along and approves a subdivision next door. Well, does that retroactively go back to these guys and they got to build a walk to connect to it? Or what about the week after they move students in? Well, we got a new neighbor, you know what I mean? Like, it's, it's a little bit, I understand what we want, I just don't know that the way this is set up is it's really workable. I just don't know when, when, you know, is it, okay, if they're planned and they're within a certain distance, or, you know, what if there's, you know, in his situation, what if there's three houses between him and the 100 houses that are going to be built there? Are we requiring that we go down to those 100 houses? Or are we just getting to the edge of the, you know what I mean? There's just too much big gray area. It's like a great, it's like, it reads more like a nice concept than an actual, here's what we need to do. There's no starting point, there's no stopping point, there's no definition.
I think the, what, what comes out to me on this one is, we're getting ready to spend a million dollars on sidewalks down Lewisville-Viana Road to Robin Hood Road. What I want to be careful of is that we don't discourage or we don't neglect the fact that that sidewalk does need some connectivity to the school. Otherwise, we dump them off at the intersection and fend for yourself.
Right. So, so I guess the thing is, though, is, are we saying then, we want them to go ahead and put the sidewalk in along, along Robin Hood Road, just from edge to edge, with their driveway cuts in them and so on? And are we good with that? Or are we saying, well, you know, over on the backside of the property, there's 50 acres that's going to be developed, and we really need to have a sidewalk that gets to that?
Right.
That's my, so I, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you there, but, but it doesn't, I don't, I don't read that this way.
I, I agree. I don't see the read that way either. However, I think we do need to look at this forwardly, forward-thinking. I actually lived in High Point in Guilford County. I lived right behind Southwest High School, Elementary, and Middle School. Now, I moved in in 2004. The house I bought was already there when, you know, before the schools came in, but it was a huge development that came in. They had sidewalks that went into the back of those schools, and they were very utilized by a number of those children. I didn't, I wasn't married at the time or did not have kids, so I can't say that I participated in the activity going to those schools every day. But I can tell you, a number of the neighborhood children did, and they were widely used. Now, to forward think here, I think it's something we need to aggressively look at.
Maybe this would be one thing that we could send back to the planning board, this section, and say, you know what, we need to, we need to think this through a little bit. Because again, the problem is, is there's no starting or stopping, or when's the responsibility up? Or when's it, you know, I mean, I agree that we want to forward think, but, you know, we've got stubs in this town that we've had to go back and abandon because they were just great idea.
But I think it's time to proffer the, the forward here instead of wait till after the fact.
And I agree completely. And I want to, I want to reiterate, we're not opposed to the pedestrian, to the pedestrian connectivity at all.
Right.
Our concern is, if we're, not only just the Robin Hood, which, which has that potential, especially with the sewer line and the, and the opportunity for a lot more residential neighborhoods, ours is kind of more, and to borrow the word, forward-thinking, is that we go to a site that doesn't have those residentials and we're required to put a sidewalk to the road because that's what the ordinance says. If they're, if that's the same kind of situation which is happening in Southwest with all the neighborhoods, and if you're not familiar with it, it's literally schools sitting in the middle of just enormous neighborhoods. If we have that kind of walk-in and we have that kind of pedestrian traffic to our schools, we're not going to have to be governed by an order. We, we're not going to take a chance of our kids, we're encouraging them to walk to school and then not give them anywhere to walk when they're on campus.
Right.
So it's not that we're going to resist putting the sidewalks in, it's just, it's habit of put the sidewalks in with that stub that goes to nowhere.
Right.
Yeah.
And then we have to be accountable to taxpayers. Why do you have a sidewalk go into a field that nobody can go to?
Yeah, right. And I think as Louisville grows, and I'm just going to be proactive here, that's what we could be facing, especially, we know the neighborhoods are coming in. Now, again, taxpayer dollars, I know we're all sitting here with those, you know, the dollars coming out, we just have to do this the right way. I think it goes back to planning board for proper etiquette here on language. You know, how do we make this work?
So we're in agreement that that particular provision needs to, needs a little more, a little more work at the planning board level?
Yeah, my thoughts.
And Josh, you're capturing, you're capturing the, you and Bo are capturing the council member sentiments and kind of the direction, so it's, we're not just throwing it back and saying, rethink it.
Can I go ahead and ask a question then on G or F, whatever it is there?
Yes.
So if I understand what you were explaining is that the, the way you lay out the parking lots may not, maybe in such a way that the connectivity would automatically be taken care of? Is that what you, I'm trying to-
I think, and just so we can get the clarification, so the old G, the new F, which is red F-
Yep.
-deals with connecting the campus to the roads, to a Robin Hood, to a Lewisville-Viana, to a deck or whatever. So that's what F, I think, where, I think that's what the red F deals with. I think that's what we just had the discussion about. The other, or that's the connecting to the roads, the-
This one is talking about the parking lots.
Yeah, so you're on, you're on, are you on red G? You're on red F?
I'm on red F.
He moved on.
This is so confusing.
So, so red F, red F, in my view, connects the campus to the street or road. Red F connects the campus to Robin Hood Road.
Okay.
Right. And there's, again, there's a mention of the parking lots and there were, there's a, where I was having the concern with the parking lot is, I'm sorry, yes, L, page six is, is item L. It's where the, we're kind of, we're focusing on putting our parking lots at the front of the building to have that exposure, to have that visibility.
Number one.
Number two, to allow us to use those parking lots, kind of double nature, you're using them for parking, but you're also using them for queuing, for stacking for the, for the cars. And the way it's written here, you want to minimize the view of parking, to minimize the view of parking, you hide it behind the building, and that's-
That's not going to work. That's just not going to work.
Tough for us to, we're basically have to, we're going to have to build two parking lots.
Right.
One to pick up and drop off in, and one to park in.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep.
I'd like to go back to the page five, red G. I've gotten, I guess somewhat lost by some of fellow council members here, but are we saying that we don't agree at all with what the planning board has brought to us at this point in time? And we need to send this back? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think-
If not, it, it, down here, and it says, and it's bolded, that these connectivities, pedestrian connectivities are encouraged but not required. So to me, that gets back to your argument, Jeff, that, you know, where does it end? Well, they're encouraged but not required. And it talks, you know, and basically, the school board is asking to add four letters to the word "to."
Right.
And make it "toward," which is more of a general direction than specifically "to." So with that being said, unless we have problems with what the planning board has brought to us with this whole section, I don't see where, why we wouldn't need to go ahead and move on this and approve it tonight. Joshua, I may be missing something.
That last sentence is really just referring to existing schools, additional modular units, as far as the encouragement, they're not required. The beginning of that paragraph would apply to anything new.
So Fred, are you suggesting then that we approve this with the changes the school board has asked for?
Well, now, with Josh's input here, I'm having to reread.
Can I remind everyone that this was copied from a PDF that did not put the strikeout on? So if it's in black and highlighted in yellow, that's a strikeout. So in that particular item, red G, would not be required is a strikeout, are encouraged but not required is new.
But if I'm hearing Josh correctly, that's only for existing schools within the town limits, not for future schools.
That's correct.
I'm in favor of striking the word "shall" in the first sentence to something that is a different word, it's not quite "shall." I need a phrasives. Maybe we better send this one back to the planning board.
I think it needs to.
Yeah, I think, I think overall, we've expressed some-
There's, there's two different issues in this one paragraph.
Regarding, regarding the connectivity intent of the planning board and the practicality of requiring, for lack of a better expression, sidewalks to nowhere.
Right.
I, I don't want to lose, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we, Mr. Moore, that we, we want to, we want to be sure that we have walkable communities.
Yep.
Where, you know, if, if, if we weren't, I'll go back again, spending a million dollars on a sidewalk just to end at that intersection and not have that connectivity with the school. That says we need to figure out some way to make that happen. So I don't want, I don't want us to step back and say, well, we're going to kind of ignore the connectivity issue at this point, because there, as Marcy says, there are a lot of issues coming up in the future that we may want to consider. So Josh, you have the sense of, of what we're talking about here? Maybe we can flush that out a little bit more?
Can we, can we just go ahead then when we send it back? And that we, we settled two of the issues easily on page five of seven, H and I. We, we were in agreement on those. We'd send it back and say, well, we want to make these changes then. Are you guys good with that, or?
Yeah, but before we, let's go ahead and address a few more before we send it back.
All right.
Number one being item 13 on page three, the number of mobile units.
Yeah, good, good point.
Let's, you know, let's have some discussion about that before we send anything back. I'm, and I understand what Mr. Moore was saying about, you know, if you've got X number of water closets inside the brick-and-mortar building, you're not adding restroom facilities and, and mobile classrooms, and obviously, your cafeteria can only seat a certain amount of folks. So you are somewhat limited by what you originally built with brick-and-mortar. I don't know whether you, when you put the initial building, brick-and-mortar up, what the extra capacity is designed into those two main functions as far as, or maybe three, the gymnasium, the library facilities, bathroom, and cafeteria facilities. So I know you're limited there, but it may be more than 25%. And it seems reasonable to me that that number is probably arbitrary. I know they had a lot of discussion, it was reflected in the planning board meeting, minutes that I have read and so forth. But I think when the day is said and done, that 25% was probably arrived at arbitrarily without consideration of what a 700-student-designed building would have, bathroom, then cafeteria, gymnasium, library, or media, excuse me, media center, facilities, and would be able to overflow. Now, if, if that consideration is put in there and this 25% was derived from that, then, you know, I stand corrected, but it seems to me that there's going to be ebb and flow as we go forward. You know, this, this- You know, this, this particular site is able to accommodate two actual brick and mortar schools if the future goes forward, which would cut down on the amount of area that would be available for mobile units if we were to build a second, you know, elementary school there. So there's got to be ebb and flow on the site. And again, I'm not real comfortable with this 25%. I know that the Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools would just like this, would love for us to just strike a percentage period out of it. So I've said my piece and I'm ready to listen.
Mr. Moore, I kind of understand, I think you're saying that the facility itself is going to limit the number of mobile classrooms.
Yeah.
You're not going to, you're not going to try to feed 1,000, a cafeteria that only serves 900?
Right, and to answer what Mr. Franklin was saying, the building, the building has two different designs. You have a core design and you have a student capacity. And they're not necessarily, they're not the same. For instance, the middle school that's, that's in design stages for Robin Hood Road is, has a core capacity of 900 and designed for 800 students right now. So we're planning on having 800 students in the facility, chairs, room for 800 students, knowing that we can expand, so we've got expansion plans for the building that can expand, and we've got how it's laid out to accommodate another 100 students. So we're designing those cafeterias, media centers, gyms, those core areas to accommodate 900 students. Have we ever put, have we ever put more than that core design? Only in probably all of our schools. So it does happen. And so it was kind of, it was kind of, the planning board did spend a lot of time to try to figure out what that number is. So it's kind of, it is kind of, it limit, it doesn't really limit itself, and we, there was a lot of discussion about how that, what that number was. And, and Josh, you can correct me, but it went back and forth between 25% and 50% and what you count and what you don't count, and it was just so many gray areas. And I think that's kind of why the city-county planning board doesn't, to my knowledge, I don't think, has a number, because they know we can't put more mobile units, modular units on a school, on a site that we can't serve. We can't serve the number of kids. We can't start lunches at 9:30 in the morning because we've got so many kids to feed. We can't make them skip PE and have you not have PE because we don't have gym space.
I did a little research on this and came across exactly what you were saying in the Durham County one, where they were talking about building their schools, and it said, no matter how many mobile units are placed on site, the core facilities can only function properly within the range of their design.
What's your pleasure, counsel?
I would just assume we strike this number 13.
The request was to strike it completely, right?
Must be removed.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine.
Everybody, okay? Glance through here.
I would like to also, Mayor, if you could, get some clarification, Mr. Moore, about the off-street loading on page four. And I, I just want to clarify that the way it's currently written, it's asking for one space per 100 pupils. And if I heard you correctly, a moment ago, you said the school is currently being designed to have 800 kids in there, potentially 900. So I see a difference here of five to nine, four extra spaces. So I guess my point is, I don't see that as being burdensome if, if you had to extend this offset curved area a few more spaces to go from five spaces that the MST A were to recommend, and I'm not sure what that acronym is.
Honestly, I'm like, what?
So when we design the school traffic, we have to go to MST A standards?
Yeah.
Make that acronym up, did you? You didn't make that acronym up, did you?
No.
We have a lot of them in schools.
But I really, you know, I'll be honest with you guys, I really don't see a problem with requiring one unloading space per 100 pupils. I mean, that, that seems very reasonable to me. And from what they're asking to go from five to what our planning board has recommended with, based on the number of students they're expecting of eight to 900, we're talking about three spaces to four spaces.
This, honestly, no, I don't mean, but it's not, it's not a cost issue, this is not, it's not an inconvenience, we can make it fit in a design somehow. It's like you said, it's three, it's 60 feet, it's as far as from here to the other side of the room.
Right.
It's not, but what it is, is MST A says, if you go over five to seven spaces, it becomes unmanageable. So we're just, it just, you have to add, you have too many staff, you've got too many pieces, because you've got eight cars, if you will, and I don't, I hate to keep using this analogy, but you've got eight cars pulling into the pits, and nobody wants to be patient to wait till that next car gets done, and everybody wants to take off and not wait to take, not go out in a single line, somebody wants to pull out, well, you pull out and you've got a car coming here. It's, it's not even a, it's really not our request, this was actually, came to us from our civil engineer that says, MST A require, asks that you not go under five or over seven. And so it's, we'll do whatever we need to do, but I don't, I think it would probably lend ourselves to some issues when the MST A, I guess, Josh, I don't, I mean, I don't know that they have any kind of governing authority, but they just make recommendations. And in all honesty, and I would say this, when this, if that plan was taken to the Department of Public Instruction for review, that comment would probably come from them that say, that says we would recommend you take it down to seven.
You know, the, the other thing is to keep in mind, and I just know this from when I was dropping my son off at Reagan, is that the time that this is happening, you know, it's only a short, it's only a little time every, every morning and every afternoon when this thing gets used, but there are people everywhere. And so when you have, you know, so it's not just a pit with folks coming by, there's pedestrians all over the place. And so I just see it as, I think what, what they're asking for is extremely reasonable. I see it as, as a safety issue from the standpoint of you've got a maximum of five cars in there dropping off and moving out. You start to back that up, and you have this mass of kids that are getting dropped off. Well, Mom, you don't have to take me all the way to the door, drop me off back here, and those guys are all walking in. It just becomes a, it's only a short amount of time every day, but it's, it's like controlled chaos. And so...
I invite anybody that wants to go see that, you're welcome, I'll take you on a tour. It's like Mr. Zinger said, it is chaos.
It really is, and so...
You haven't experienced it.
I just, just living it, personally, I go, yeah, I, I don't, wouldn't, I understand, it's not an expense issue, it's a safety issue. And so in my opinion, I think what they're asking for, I think this is probably wise, but...
Anyone else?
So, we want to go with the five, recommend by MST A? I could live with that.
That seems to be, that seems to be...
If I could interrupt, I apologize, but I did ask for five, I would suggest you say five to seven, because I was basing my five on a Robin Hood Road Middle School, which is what I told you, I tried not to do when I was reviewing this, but I would say five to seven.
Okay.
I'd be receptive to a minute into that.
All right, let's do that.
That would almost equate to if we changed the 50 that's been struck and the 100 that's highlighted to 75 pupils. So back to that. So, wouldn't it?
Just out of curiosity, how, how many spaces does Meadowlark have?
How many parking spaces, or how many drop spaces? I, I, we're working on a plan to, to change that, and I think on the, on the middle school side, and I'm just going for visual, but when I was watching them picking up and drop off, you can drop off about probably four to six at a time. And, and so on the element, excuse me, on the elementary side, I think they have actually spaces marked for seven. So I know that I feel pretty confident the elementary is seven, the middle school is about four to six. And I'm, I'm speculating because I know it's designed exactly like Southeast Middle School, and I spent a lot of time watching Southeast pick up and drop off in the mornings.
So then, Mr. Mayor, if I'm keeping my scorecard here, what I'm seeing is, is that we're agreeing with all of their changes that we're asking the planning board to look at buffering, the connectivity with the sidewalks, and the parking lot being hidden as opposed to be out in front. And all the rest of them, we're saying, okay, at least that's where I think we're at right now.
We're in agreement on that. That's what, that's what I get to. We're changing H on page five to site plan map. We're changing I on page five from three to four. We are asking the planning board to take, I'm sorry?
We want to get the planning board to look at F and G on page five.
On F and G, three to four, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. We are proposing on number three on page four, using the word five to seven. We are striking number 13 on page three. I think, Mr. Zinger, you are right, that leaves us, number three, the buffering discussion on page two, the pedestrian connectivity on page five, and the pedestrian connectivity to adjoining residential uses, also on page five. And parking on page six, that we'd like maybe a little more consideration at the planning board level.
I just want to be clear like that, so the planning board, I mean, I respect our volunteers, give their time, and I don't want them to, you know, all the stuff that we've decided here tonight, they don't need to spend their valuable time on that, and so...
I agree.
That was, I don't want them to feel like they have to go back and rehash this whole thing.
Josh, one other clarification that, that I'd like to ask about. On page five, and stay in parking, we refer to grass parking locations utilized for overflow parking. And on page six, M, we refer to remote parking. Are we talking about the same thing there?
I think so, yes.
There's not an overflow, overflow lot and a remote lot? So maybe let's get some, whatever, whatever word you want to choose, remote or, or anything else, whatever, whatever, just we have some consistency there.
One thing I'd like to ensure is that we have sidewalks to these parking lots and that you're not cutting from one parking lot to the other parking lot by walking through them. So that if you've got adjacent parking lots, that you're not walking through the parking lot to get to wherever you're going next, that there's a sidewalk along the parking lot.
Like between the parking lot and the building?
Yeah, like, I, I think if you're standing in front of Meadowlark, and I was trying to remember in my head, is that the parking lot that's across the drive, there's no sidewalk to get to it to the front of the school, you have to actually walk down through the parking lot to get to the building, that there's no sidewalk from, actually across the street to get to the building, unless you get in the parking lot and walk through the parking lot over to the building. There's not a sidewalk that takes you up to that park, up to that street to cross over to the other parking lot.
Up to Meadowlark?
Yes.
Yep. I agree.
So at this particular point, we will not take any action on this ordinance pending further review by the planning board on those items that we've identified?
Well, I guess the only action would be is we decided those other items.
Those other items, we, well, okay, so we would, Bo, do we want to go ahead and approve those other items or just deal with it when it comes back, knowing that we've already reached consensus on those other ones?
Well, I think we have a, I think we have a record with regard to the ones that are agreed upon, and the minutes will certainly reflect that, and we'll be able to look at that. I don't think that any formal action needs to be taken on that, but I think you may want to make, I think everybody, I think I saw enough heads nodding where we had consensus with regard to all of the things that I believe have been agreed to, and a consensus with regard to the approximately three things that need to be sent back to the planning board for their consideration, if I'm not mistaken. So I don't think anything has to be done, I just want to make sure that, you may wish to make sure that we do in fact have consensus with regard to the things that it sounded as if we had consensus for.
Will you make a motion that we accept those changes? Is that appropriate?
Before, a question for Bo. If, if this goes back to the planning board, do we need to hold another public hearing, continue this one? Or when it comes back, will we have to have a public hearing on any changes from the planning board? I mean, or we'll get into motions?
What, what I think I would recommend, and, and this will be as the council wishes to proceed, is, you know, is to complete the public hearing process this evening, in case there's anyone else that might have input that might be valuable to consider when that matter goes back to the planning board. Then once that's done, you're in a discussion stage, and you're kind of just asking the planning board for their additional advice with regard to things. It's not going to be a public, another public hearing at the planning board level, it's going to be their consideration based upon what you have instructed them to look at tonight. They'll consider that, and then if you'll simply indicate that you asked for the planning board to come back, let's say if it's for next month, to have them do that, then, you know, you were at the discussion stage, it will not, you know, anyone who's here or anyone who's virtually here can, can come back and, and see what happens. But if there's no further input tonight present for the, for the public hearing, I don't think we have to continue the public hearing portion of the consideration of this matter, if that makes sense.
We actually, we actually probably are, we needed to close the public hearing before we engaged in our discussion, I think, which we, which we haven't closed the public hearing.
Well, except we were asking...
Except that you're, you're, yeah, you're asking, you're asking someone...
So before you, probably before you make your motion, we'll need you to come out of the public hearing.
Okay.
Any further questions for Mr. Moore, for Josh? Any other comments by council? With that, we'll close the public hearing. Would any of the remaining three people wish to make a comment on our proposed ordinance? Thank you.
Okay.
Very good, Mr. Smith, I think you're, you'll be up now.
Okay. I'll just make it general, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I'll just say that we'll make a motion that we accept those changes that we identified, that we didn't refer back to the planning board, and accept those changes.
That we were unanimous, we agree with him.
Yes.
Second. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Zinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, that is unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, let me say this for, for those who are watching at home.
I think Bo had something else to say.
Pardon?
I think Bo had something else he wanted to say.
Was that too loose?
No, it, no, it was plenty tight. It was just a question of whether we wanted to formally, is that a matter of formal adoption of that portion of the UDO amendment, or is that an agreement as to what you've agreed to pending the completion of the rest of it by the planning board, which is what I thought maybe was going to happen?
Yeah, I think that's the latter. Yeah, I think, I think that's exactly it, yeah. This, this is not, this is not passage of that portion of the ordinance. This is acknowledgement by the council as in consensus on these changes, going back to planning board and asking for their further assistance on the other points.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. And again, ladies and gentlemen, the, these are, are, these are not easy types of discussions to have. We, as a council, greatly respect the work that the planning board puts into this. I mean, literally, they do hours and hours and hours of work to try to present to us what they feel are the best recommendations. I think we, when we are presented in public hearings with other information that we might want to consider, then it's our, it's part of our due diligence to make those considerations and, and, and request the planning board take additional looks at those things that we may have questions on with some direction on our part. So we do thank the planning board for their work, planner for the work. Mr. Moore, thank you for your comments, and your staff for, for your thoughtful reflections on, on this particular ordinance. Alrighty. Thank you, council members, for that meaningful discussion. Okay. We have no unfinished business this evening. Josh, do you want to bring us up on new business coming before us, which is setting a public hearing for a finding of fact evidentiary, evidentiary hearing?
So 7A Resolution 2018010 would be setting a public hearing, or setting a, I guess it's a finding of fact evidentiary hearing for Thursday, March the 8th, 2018, for the Glad Acres, a special use permit for a planned residential development. At the corner of Robin Hood Road and Glad Acres Road, that's 60 acres of property, and they are requesting a planned residential, planned residential development to put in 92 units, 92 single-family homes.
Bo, will you give us the Cliff Notes on the difference between just a public hearing and a fact evidentiary, evidentiary?
An evidentiary hearing, this will be a quasi-judicial matter, this is heard in the same manner as the boards of, Board of Adjustment hears, special use permits, that this is a special use permit for a planned... permits, that this is a special use permit for a planned residential development. It will involve the consideration of sworn testimony and other evidence presented before you. You'll be sitting kind of as if you were a court. That being considered, one thing we want to make sure that does not happen between now and your hearing on that is that you do not have discussions with citizens with regard to their input. That is hard for you, I understand, because it's inconsistent with your normal patterns and practices of, of hearing from citizens. But on this matter, I'll ask you not to, to do that. At the time of the hearing, I'll ask you again whether or not you have had that experience to happen to you and whether or not you'll be able to fairly and reasonably consider the evidences before you. So it's an evidentiary hearing, you'll make findings of fact and conclusions as to whether or not the evidence meets the requirements of the four findings that have to be made. And if so, then the special use permit for the planned residential development would be granted.
Any questions for Bo or Josh?
You will give us some cliff notes in our briefing, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And, and I'll be there to advise as we, as we move along through the process, similar to the one that went into the hours of the next morning.
Very good. If there are no other questions, entertain a motion.
Motion to set the hearing.
Second it.
Mr. Zinger makes the motion, Ms. Goleman makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Ms. Walker, you have an annexation request.
Yes.
To discuss with us.
I do. And if I can find my cursor. Okay. I did not have this information available when we had the briefing, but I do have the certificate of sufficiency for the request of that five-acre annexation. I have gone through the information and have found that the information is correct. And under other findings, I made a notation, if you compare the application to what is in GIS, there's a typing error where GIS is correct, but the typing error occurred on the application because the person tried to, I guess, update the PDF and were not successful. But at any rate, everything seems to match. And because it does match, I am asking that council set a public hearing for that annexation request.
What's your pleasure, counsel?
Motion to set the hearing.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Zinger, a second by Mrs. Mock, and this public hearing would be set for March?
For, also for March the 8th, yes.
For March 8th?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Joyce, you have some appointments to student leadership for us?
I do. We have sister and brother who've requested an application to be a part of student leadership. And I did check on their spelling and there is no L. So it is Marais, I guess. I'm not really sure how it's actually pronounced, but they are asking to be appointed.
Counsel?
To approve.
Second.
As Mock makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Hank, you've got some administrative reports for us?
For town holidays, we don't have any more until next month, but on Friday, the 30th of March, we will observe a holiday for the town for Good Friday. And then moving on to other matters, I want to remind everyone that members of council will be attending the essentials of municipal government in Nashville from February 21st through February 23rd. And that board and committee appointments will be made next month at, on March 8th at our council meeting. And then moving to things that were approved last week, we did approve the budget calendar, which will have dates for the budget on April 12th, April 16th, April 23rd, May 3rd, May 7th, June 7th, and June 14th. Also at that meeting, we had, I think we just touched on it just a minute ago, we directed the town clerk to investigate an annexation petition for 5.75 acres off of Twin Oaks Lake Drive. That was approved. And then we also approved ordinance 2018007, amending budget ordinance 2017020 in an amount of $395 to increase funds for the collection of cardboard for recycling. We approved ordinance 2018008, amending budget ordinance 2017020 in an amount of $36,000 to increase the budget for snow and ice removal. And lastly, we approved ordinance 2018009, amending budget ordinance 2017020 in an amount of $450 to purchase a wireless lavalier system.
Which was in use tonight. If anybody could, could hear the, the, the speaker intercom, and I'm hoping folks at home had a better participation in what was, could hear what we were, we were doing here at the council meeting. So thank you, counsel, for, for approving that item. I think it'll make a big difference. Very good. We are now at the final opportunity this evening for any members of the public who are still vertical, who wish to make comments this evening, address the council, share with us your thoughts and concerns. Anybody wish to address the council? Anybody at all? Very good. We have forms on the back of the table, as always. If you wish to leave written comments, that will make part of the record. Counsel, wrapping it up. Thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, I think it's, I think, hope it's appropriate, we can mention one of our staff members.
Yes. Yes, you, Ms. Howard?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Well, I, I suspect that, that one of the people watching at home tonight is our receptionist and event planner, Stacy Howard. She had a very significant illness, complications from the flu, which has taken her out of commission for a while. We hope she's going to be back soon. And I know I speak on behalf of all of our town council members and town staff and residents, wishing her a very speedy recovery. I know Tom, her husband, is taking very, very good care of her. We miss you, Stace, and we, we look forward to when you get back. Thank you, Mr. Smith, that was a, a good reminder. Anything else this evening? With that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Stay moved.
Mr. Zinger makes the motion, and I think Mr. Franklin can have the second on this one. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, we're adjourned.
We did it again.